For Thursday, March 3rd, 2016. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Camerota?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioners Berber?
Here.
Commissioner Van Gogh?
Here.
Commissioner Bowles?
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Cheryl Ivey?
Here.
City Attorney from our number now.
Here.
Okay. There's a item for public comment. Individuals will have a chance to also do public comment under the individual hearing items. Would anyone like to come forward now for public comment? Seeing none, there is none. We'll close the public comment. And we'll seek approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda's so approved. Approval of the minutes. All in favor?
Move to approve.
Move. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes approved. Any announcements or committee reports?
I think I should, but I have to do a two-sit during this staff discussion.
Thank you. Any informational items?
No, they're not.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I'd like to open the public hearing for agenda item PCN Consideration of and possible action on a conditional use permit request to allow for a craft distillery on a site approximately 1.5 acres in size in the industrial zoning district located at 994 Glendale Avenue in Sparks, Nevada. Mr. Crittenden, Senior Planner.
Chairman Camerota, Ian Crittenden, Senior Planner for the record. This is a request, as the item stated, to have a conditional use approved. The use that is being asked for is a craft distillery in the industrial zone. They are required to receive a conditional use permit. That is tied to often be... Craft distilleries are often tied to bar and restaurant-type uses, which have higher parking demand that is often able to be met in industrials, so that's why they fall into that category. This is not going to have those kind of higher-intensity uses attached to it. It is just a request to run a craft distillery from that location and have sales from a front office area. A far lower demanding parking than would be required otherwise. The applicants did perform a parking analysis. The center that they're going to be located in, as you can see here on the map, is here off of Glendale Avenue. Is about, or is a 2,816 square foot office and warehouse space. The center has 50 parking spaces and current demand, based on the uses, they went on, did a survey of what uses were in there, is 40 parking spaces. So there is room for them, plus a little more, which is a good thing, and not something we have in a lot of the industrial areas. So this use is not out of character for the center that it's in. There's a lot of other uses that are similar. Taking this and all other things into account, staff recommends approval of this item. Available for any questions if you have.
Ian, has there been any feedback from any of the other tenants in the building?
I have had zero contact from anyone about this item. From the public, I guess I should say.
Ian?
Yes.
Is there any landscape requirements at all?
The... That's a great question. I hadn't even thought about that because of them occupying an existing tenant space. I hadn't even thought about landscaping. And I don't know how much landscaping could be added to this location as it is.
Probably not much. It looks like it's all asphalt.
Yeah, it's an established space. And they're not adding square footage, which a lot of times is the point which trips, you know, additional stuff. But in this case, we haven't really looked at that.
Any more questions? Is the applicant here? Would you like to come forward? Welcome.
Thank you.
Please state your name, please.
I'm Karen Fuller.
Michael Fuller.
Any questions for the applicants? Yeah, I do. Karen or Michael, do you know, is there any landscaping around there now?
There is minimal. It was primarily designed as an industrial, semi-industrial.
Right, as shrubs or trees and...
There's a four-foot swath in front of the sidewalk with shrubbery. No trees, no other greenery.
Okay, is it automatic sprinklered, or do you know?
That we don't know. We are planning on leasing the space.
Okay.
Yeah.
If there is, I don't know if I, I mean, it's up to you, but if there's a hose bib out there, maybe once in a while, just turn it on. Just maybe once a week or whatever, give it a little water. I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, like I said, we haven't, don't have looked at it that closely.
Right. The distillery is what I want, though.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Is this an entirely new venture, or are you moving from somewhere?
Entirely new.
Okay.
It's our retirement job.
Okay.
Got to have something to do, otherwise we'll go nuts.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, shall we bring it back to the diets?
Close the public hearing.
Open the public hearing, please. Would anyone like to come forward? There being none, seeing none, close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commissioners for comments. Any final comments?
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I move to approve the conditional use permit CU 16001 associated with PCN 16002, adopting findings C1 through C6 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 and 2 as listed in the staff report.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition?
Good luck.
Best of luck.
The next item on agenda is PCN 16004. Consideration of and possible action on a request for tentative and final approval of an amendment to the Copper Canyon Plan Development Handbook to revise development standards to allow for a gas station use on a site approximately 1,308 acres in size in the new urban development zoning district located east of Vista Boulevard at Solomon Circle and north on Vista Boulevard interchange with IAD Sparks, Nevada.
Commissioner Camerota, or Chairman Camerota, commissioners, again Ian Crittenden for the, Senior Planner for the record. The Copper Canyon Handbook was approved in 2008. When it was approved, there was not, in their land use table, there was no mention of gas station or anything that resembled gas station. And so, a project was brought forth that contemplated using a gas station and amongst some other concerns for that and site-specific things. One of the first things they had to be done was, a gas station had to be added to the land use table as a permitted use. This application requested to be added specifically to the mixed-use district, or the mixed-use land use inside of that land use table. This is a vicinity map that kind of shows the scale of Copper Canyon. I did have a few phone calls and requests, trying to understand what was happening because such a large area was mentioned. Because it's amendment to that handbook, the entirety of the handbook has to be essentially noticed for, and so it's a very large area. But the actual area affected is much smaller. The site that is being contemplated is right down here in the very kind of south-westernly corner, I guess, of the property. If we look at the land use map, you can see this kind of orangey-brown color is the mixed-use area, which is a fairly decent size, but not nearly what we're talking about when we had to notice the entirety of the handbook. The request being made would only add a gas station use to that area. While the impetus for this request is a site-specific thing, it would allow for gas stations in that entire area, and all of them, including the one that kind of spurred this request, is going to have to go through the administrative review process and make sure that all the citing issues and stuff are addressed that come along with the gas station and so forth. The scope of this change, staff felt, was fairly minor and recommends approval of, or recommends, you recommend approval to City Council for this item. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, feel free.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'm assuming since the potential plans would, might include restaurants as well as gas stations. So I'm assuming restaurants must already have been included in mixed use, which is the reason it's not, no references made to it here?
That's correct.
Okay. Second thing, it's not really part of our decision here tonight, but we all know that that area was to be the access to Copper Canyon, one of the accesses to Copper Canyon, if that project ever moves forward. So I want to just make certain that whoever's overseeing that continues to allow for good quality access to Copper Canyon, if it ever moves forward.
Any other questions for... Is the applicant here, please? Welcome. Can you state your name, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Garrett Gordon, Law Firm of Lewis, Roque, Roth, Gerber, Christie, today on behalf of Copper Canyon Partners LLC. Nice to see many of you. It's been a little while. Represent the ownership of the property. As has been indicated, we were approached by a potential developer to develop the corner of Vista and Solomon to include a gas station. We submitted, we had a preliminary application meeting, and we're still working through some site plan issues. But step one is, we can't submit a site plan for a gas station because it's not permitted in the handbook. So this is step one. Step two would be a site plan, and probably bundled with two special use permits, one for drive-through use and one for 24-hour use. And that would, of course, come before you, and you'd see the whole package together. But this is step one, and I look forward to moving forward and hopefully getting Copper Canyon kicked off. Very exciting project. The ownership has been in many, many discussions with many folks along the West Coast, given Tric, Switch, Tesla, and the location of Copper Canyon. There's a lot of excitement for residential, commercial, industrial. There's even, if you guys recall, there's even a gaming entitlement on the property from back in 2008. So hopefully, we're back here in many more months to come, getting this project kicked off. So thank you for your time, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Just to reiterate the point that I made, that we need to make sure, as you develop your site plan, that the potential access to the rest of the project is not impaired.
Thank you for the question. Absolutely. As we incrementally develop this project, we have to look at, we have to look at the potential of the full project being developed. So right-of-way is will have to be dedicated from day one. If a median's going to go in at a later point in time, you'd have to discuss that with current users. So yeah, we're thinking about all those issues. Very good point.
Thank you.
On the same subject, you, I understand you're related to having to answer to two other agencies on this, NDOT and Department of Transportation. Is that not right?
Yes, thank you for the question. Regarding just a land use change, you can see the two letters in here for NDOT and RTC, they kind of defer to the municipality for land use changes. But when we bring forward the project, we've already had one scoping meeting with our traffic engineer, the city, and RTC. Their input, it will be certainly important as we move forward with access points off of Vista.
Those questions will have to be cleared up before you move forward with it. Is that not right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I have, Garrett, I know you mentioned earlier that you probably have to bring it back for a special use permit.
Correct. As was indicated by Commissioner Bowles, restaurants are permitted. So would be, if this is approved tonight by council, gas stations. That would just require a site plan review approved by staff.
Right.
But the use permits, as we contemplate, there'd be a gas station, potentially two drive-through locations. So the drive-through and the 24-hour use would kick us into two use permits to come before you.
So that'd be a conditional use permit?
Yes, that was.
I learned that last month. I was questioning that about special use permitting.
Oh, especially, yeah. I apologize. Every jurisdiction calls it a little differently, but yes. And Sparks, for the record, is a CUP.
See, I just wanted to make sure I'm on top of it there.
But they all, but you know, it's only allowed to have three conditions, though, per use permit, no more.
I know. Thanks, Garrett.
I'd just like to make a comment. I was looking at the site there, and there's a very inside a trailer.
There right now? Be nice if the gateway to the, on Vista Boulevard, east side of Sparks, would be, not have a trailer on it that looks in the condition it is. Just as a statement, I'd like to see that cleaned up as soon as possible.
Thank you, Commissioner. We are aware of that trailer. It's not the ownership's. We don't know how it got there. We've been working with Sparks PD in an effort to get it removed, if a permit's necessary, if not. And my understanding is, we just got a quote the other day, for 1,500 bucks to have it removed. So I would imagine it'd be removed by the end of the month. Yes.
Any further questions for the applicant? This being a public hearing, would like to open the public hearing?
Thank you.
Would anyone like to come forward and speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I moved to forward a recommendation to the City Council for tentative and final approval of a request for an amendment to the Copper Canyon Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 16004, adopting findings PDA through PDG and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the staff report. Because the request includes final approval, the planning commission does not recommend that the City Council require a bond at this time, as stated in NRS 278A.490.
Second.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Following item on the agenda is PCN 15067. Consideration of and possible action for a site 4.32 acres, excuse me, in size, located at 350 Galetti Way, Sparks, Nevada, of a master plan amendment, request to change the land use designation from tourist commercial designation TC to industrial. Aye. And a request to rezone the property from tourist commercial to industrial. The presenter is Ian Crittenden.
Ian Crittenden, Senior Planner for the record. Again, so as you mentioned in reading the item, this is a request to change both the land use and the zoning on this property. They both are currently tourism commercial and would like to be, are being requested to be changed to I or industrial. The site is directly east of the existing Semex cement batch plant, concrete batch plant. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on February 16th. There were a couple of attendees from the neighborhood. There was no comments that were concerns about the change in land use or zoning. There have been some concerns voiced by NDOT, which you've probably read in your staff report, and from city staff about additional traffic there on Galetti Way. The assertion from the property owner, from the applicant, is that while they would change the zoning there, their intent would not increase traffic, but just shift it from one side of the street from the other. The property has been used for a semi-industrial use of parking and storage of materials for quite some time. The request to change the zoning seems to bring the property into performance of the existing uses on it. It's not in contradiction to other uses that are adjacent, and staff recommends approval of, or recommends, your recommendation of approval of these items. There was a request at the study session that we had about the difference in size of these properties. The existing site, as near as my measurements came, is about 2 and 1/4 acres. And the site that they're asking to be rezoned is about 4.3, if I remember it, 432 acres. So it is, well, two acres larger anyway. Yeah. So that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'm available.
Any questions for you? Is the applicant here?
Evening. My name is Ron Wilson. I represent Semex in the western region of the United States for land use and land use issues. And I got the tag on this one.
Where's your partner at?
He didn't show.
No.
I'm going to have a conversation tomorrow with him.
He's probably home watching that debate.
Oh, that could be feisty. If I might add a little bit to this, as Ian mentioned, we've been using this area for, you know, truck storage, truck turnaround, ancillary kind of things. But we've never been able to use it for any functional use because we don't have it zoned properly. The one across the street is smaller, it's really cramped. It's old, very dysfunctional. So one of the thoughts is, if we can get this rezoned, we might have the chance of building a better one. And if we do, the other one goes away. So that's the difference for the delta on the traffic. It would be the same traffic.
Would you be starting a new plant or a brand-new setup? Or would you be transporting all the other stuff over?
As far as I'm aware, most of the material over there is pretty bad, so I don't think we'd be moving anything. We'd probably just dismantle it.
And what is your intention with the old property?
I don't think we own that. I think we lease it.
Oh, really?
I think so.
That's a surprise.
Would you assume that, since it is significantly bigger than the old plant, that anything you might build there, if you chose to build, would include the current uses, the storage and so forth? Or would be using that within the old site? Would you just flip-flop?
It's my understanding that if we did build a plant there, that it would incorporate all the functions of the old plant, which would include storage.
So everything would be done on that space?
Yes, sir.
And the other space would be available for some other use?
Yes, sir.
By anyone else?
And we've met, you know, initially with various representatives of the city, and they've given us a laundry list of the things that we'd have to put in, and we were aware of that, so it'd be a lot cleaner operation.
And then as far as traffic is concerned, as it sits now, when you get a call, you'll go one way or the other.
Excuse me.
Is that going to be the same effect? You don't have, you won't be just tying up one exit out?
No, sir. It'll be one way or the other. The delta on that is, right now, we go, we come in, load the concrete, go out, come back, come to the other side, and come back across the street. So that's a lot of cross-traffic.
And you don't really have any huge activity except for on very active days, right? Large force?
No, we don't.
It's just standard flow out of there?
It's the standard flow. We've only got so many trucks, so so many can only go out, so.
I'd like a couple of questions.
Sure.
Chairman. First thing on that, I've watched that site for quite a few years, and I know that there's been very great concerns, as you're saying in the report, NDOT. And you're saying, and City Arena has had concerns in the past, where they've actually conditioned, is that correct? Conditioned you as far as cleaning up the street? Is that with the sweeper? And could you go through some of the conditions that are presently on that site?
I'm not really prepared to go into detail, but I know a little bit about the sweeper issue because I was involved in the beginning of that. The operation had a sweeper that they tried to use. It was really a very unfunctional piece of equipment. So they ended up hiring an outside sweeper to come in. And it's, at best, you know, okay.
Yeah.
Not great, okay. Once we get the other plant built and this plant goes away, then you wouldn't have that cross-traffic that creates a lot of that dust.
Right. So you reduce the cross-traffic.
Right.
Presently, I see that you use the other site to stage trucks.
That's correct.
You also do washout, don't you, on that?
A little bit, yes.
And reclaim aggregates on that site?
That's correct.
So those functions will stay on that side, on the east side, on the spark side there?
Right.
So what you're saying, we're not going to be moving back and across that road?
That's right. And that eliminates that dust going back and forth.
Okay.
So they'll come in and go out. That's it.
Exactly. Okay. The second thing that we were getting, if you look from your meeting with the public, is the gas station. And there was items that I'm reading in there about causing a problem, reading credit cards and things of dust. So, and I read in there that there's been an increase in dust lightly, you know, and did you go to that?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so could you explain that?
Sure. There was a couple of issues that go along with the dust. Obviously, the traffic on the street is one of them. But really, the major player in that is the dust that's being blown off the stockpiles. So, you know, they're right up against the street.
Right.
And anytime the wind blows, it just kind of goes in that direction. You know, we've tried to put water misters on top to keep it wet. I think, you know, the new facility, once it goes in, we have a chance to really design something appropriate. There's just so little space out there to do anything.
Right.
It's just, it's hard to maintain a reasonable operation.
To be able to do that.
Yes.
The third thing I'm reading here on these, on the maps, and it's showing, it's funny, there are four exhibits, and I don't know the reasoning. Some are showing a wet plant, and then there was showing a dry plant on this. This will be a central mix of wet, the new plants you're putting there? It's saying existing dry plant facilities, it's showing them, and then the other exhibits are showing wet plant. What are you planning on putting? Are you planning on putting a central mix batch plant or a dry mix plant?
It's probably, in the best of all worlds, would be both, because what you run into, of course, is, you know, a transit time when you've got a load of wet concrete.
Exactly.
So a lot of times, they like to take a dry load out there, and it can water, put water in it as they get closer to the job site.
But will there be a main barrel, a central mix?
The silos will be the same.
And, no, but I'm talking the actual mixing. Some of the problems are old batch plants of a dry mix that essentially, when they're mixing them on-site versus in the central mix, they get quite a bit more pollution. So are you putting a central mix plant there?
Yeah, I can't answer that, sir.
Okay. And I would say these will be done later.
Yeah, so I would say that these are questions that would be appropriate for the, for the project.
Right. We haven't really started to design.
And I... And I'm bringing this just early in the stage, because if we approve this piece of land, I want you aware that I do have some concerns as far as dust and those items, you know, in that next section.
We just need to be careful. I believe we were getting off your master plan amendment here, so.
Exactly.
Bring your questions back in a bit.
And I'll just quickly say that, you know, once we get through this episode with the zoning rechange, we still have to come back for a plant design, go through the whole conditional use issues and.
Well, there won't be a conditional, it will be staff review at this point, my understanding. Is that correct?
Yeah, so you just refer, but all of these items will be discovered.
And that's why, and I do understand, but I still want, I want this on record of concerns about environmental, traffic, you know, that just changing a piece of land doesn't mean, you know, complete approval, okay?
Yeah, we understand that.
Okay. That's my only questions.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This being a public hearing, we want to open comments to the public. Anyone like to come forward? Public hearing is closed. Bring it back to the commissioners, please.
I'm prepared to make one motion, and someone else can make the second motion.
I'll take the second.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to city council for certification of a master plan amendment for PCN 15067, based on findings MP1 through MP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ask for a discussion.
Oh, excuse me. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And as for the second motion, please?
I'll take it. I move to forward a recommendation as approved of approval to the city council for rezoning associated with PCN 15067, based on the findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck.
Go down to general business items. PCN 08042, consideration of and possible action on a request to approve the architectural building elevations for approximately, for an approximately 40,880 square foot addition to the main retail center in fulfillment of the requirements listed in the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook. Excuse me.
Ian Crandall, senior planner. So, as the planning commission may know, there's no public here specifically, but they may be watching, the Legends at Sparks Marina, their handbook requires that all new building elevations come to the planning commission for approval, and so that's what this item is. If you see the drawing here, you can, I tried to explain this when we were at a study session, didn't have visuals to help kinda guide you. So, this is the building, that's the additional retail that is being proposed. This is the theater over here, you can just kinda see the corner of it, and then, I'm not sure what all shops are on here, but that's the existing walkway that goes back to some of this existing parking. So, that's the building area that's being proposed. Elevations for that. Staff reviewed these and looked at the handbook for Legends, and, you know, the materials being proposed, color palettes, facade treatments are in compliance with the handbook, and we recommend approval of these elevations. If you have any questions on the table.
Or any questions for Ian? Does the applicant like to come forward, please?
Good evening. For the record, Dennis McGovern, I'm the general manager of the Legends at Sparks Marina. I have a comment or a statement to read, if you bear with me. I want to thank the commission for their consideration of what we call the next exciting step for the Legends at Sparks Marina. I also want to thank the staff for their hard work on this project and their thoughtful comments. Jeff McMahon, who is our partner in charge of design on this project, apologizes that he was not able to be with us tonight and join us from Kansas City where he lives. So, I'm here on his behalf to present these elevations to you. If you recall, many years ago, this parcel of land was originally going to be the location of the theater. After many changes in theater operators, a recession, and a change in the philosophy, we decided that the theater would better serve the project if we build it with its main entry inside the lifestyle portion of the project where it sits today. We're very glad we did that, as it's been enormously successful. Due to the success of the theater and the recent success of the shopping center, we now have a need for more shop space. In order to accommodate that need, we are proposing to build an additional 40,000 square foot of shop space on the prior theater parcel, facing out towards the parking lots as shown on the submissions that you have. The building's design is in keeping with the design quality of the rest of the shopping center and the intent of the PD handbook. The proposed building materials are made up of compatible materials matching the bricks and stones throughout the existing center today. The EFS colors are selected from an approved material palette. However, we are using a higher percentage of darker, richer colors to add some variety to what is currently in the center. All services to the new building, including trash, meters, and other utilities, will be kept behind the building and out of sight to the customers and passersby. We will also continue to screen all rooftop equipment and other unsightly equipment as we have done throughout this project. The proposed exterior will continue to have changes to the horizontal parapet lines and pilasters to create shadows that help avoid the flatness in the elevations. These types of treatments have been common throughout the project, and it will look no different. We have all worked very hard to create a great design and shopping environment at the Legends, and we want to continue that great design by adding this next addition to it. We thank you for your contributions, the work of the staff, the design of Legends, and helping us with the design of Legends, and we ask for your approval of this proposal. Take any questions that I might be able to answer.
Any questions for the applicant?
Just, obviously, just more of interest to us than anything else. The last time that we had a discussion, you talked about some turnover that had been refilled in the main area. Are you now to the point where you, it is speculative that you need this space, or are there conversations going on with?
There are active conversations for tenants to occupy the 40,000 square foot. It's, I will not tell you that we're 100% leased out there.
I understand.
But there are active conversations, and it's been received very well. The turn for the positive that the shopping center has taken in the last 18 months has really positioned us nationally, so that when we go to leasing meetings, people wanna talk to us.
I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Chairman, I need to interrupt, and I apologize, under the last item, PCN 15067, there was a resolution, resolution number 210, and I believe it needed to be.
I have it in front of me.
Apologies on my part, I didn't catch the motion. Not included, so I guess what we're asking you to do is to.
Reopen the item.
Well, you know, reapprove the item with reference to resolution number 210.
Okay, so. Do you need that reference to both suggested motions?
No, that's specific to the. So, you might, it might read, for example, "I moved to forward a recommendation of approval and a resolution number 210 to the city council."
Okay. I believe that was my motion, so I will restate my motion.
Thank you.
"I move to forward a recommendation of approval to city council for certification of a master plan amendment for PCN 15067, including resolution."
210.
210, based on findings MP1 through MP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Are there any discussions? Second.
Second.
Any discussions? Call to vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Are we back to our?
Where are we?
Number 12, I believe, is your next.
Before you do, may I make a comment on this, please?
Absolutely.
I have walked at Marina yesterday morning, I observed, stopped, and looked at the theater and surrounding buildings, and I got a, I was quite impressed with your choice of the materials that you're gonna put up there, and how compatible they are with the surroundings. And I've got to say, you did a fine job on that. They're a little darker materials, but I think it's needed in that particular case anyhow.
So, we're on, to refresh, we're on, including the chairman, we're on PCN 08042.
Right. I'm prepared to make a motion. "I move to approve the building." Elevations for approximately 40,880 square foot addition to the main retail center zone A3, in fulfillment of the requirement set forth in the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 08042.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good luck with your project.
Very nice.
Item number 12 on general business is the City of Sparks 2015 annual report to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. It's consideration of impossible action on the City of Sparks Regional Planning Annual Report to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. Welcome to.
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, Jim Rundell, senior planner, here to present the annual report, which, to an extent, is a year in review for the Sparks Planning Commission. Most of the items, you'll be familiar with, some of them you won't, but this is required out of a state statute that all local governing jurisdictions that are governed by the regional plan have to submit an annual report to the Regional Planning Commission. So, our regional planning commissioners will get to see this again at TMRPA, and it will be the annual reviews of, or annual reports of all of the jurisdictions governed by the regional plan. I'll just briefly run through it, all of it, you should have already read, but we'll just go over it. Number one is that, what incentive strategies is Sparks trying to do in coordination with the regional plan requirements? And as you are all very familiar with, this year, this past year in 2015, we updated, or overhauled is a better word, Sparks Municipal Code. Of course, there were numerous significant changes that we worked on for years to create that, including the identification of barriers to development in Sparks, which we believe the new zoning code addressed. As for the CIP, the CIP included a $33 million, $33,700,000 budget. Much of that went to the modifications at City Hall to include an air conditioning and heating system on a very old building. Redevelopment one, the planning commission has seen, or tentative maps, to create the parcelization of the condominium project in Victorian Square. That is being done currently. You can drive down there and see the construction has started. Silverwing is the developer that is doing that, and I think it's 236 dwelling units that are being constructed down there. Also, you may soon see the construction of the two parcels in front of the movie theater go to the mixed-use project, and that was done through administrative review. And redevelopment area two, which includes Audi Boulevard and the Sparks Marina area, you may remember the handbook amendment that you all approved to continue or complete the work on the formerly abandoned parking structure that exists over at the Marina currently. And so, that should be underway soon. Also, we identified in this report that Renown has acquired the Lowe's property, former Lowe's property over on Audi Boulevard, and looks to move in an office-type of uses over there. Office-type, Ramondo? Office-type of uses of back office for the Renown facility. Moving ahead a little bit on to affordable housing, the City of Sparks utilizes a component of CDBG money to do housing rehabilitation loan program, and we also utilize it to do emergency grant, or emergency repair grants for citizens of Sparks. Over the past year, the city issued six households with a housing rehabilitation loan, and six with emergency repair grants. Sparks is also a, one of the jurisdictions in the Washoe County Home Consortium, Reno's the lead agency on that. We have done numerous projects through the home consortium. They typically come up in the City of Reno or the City of Sparks. There haven't been very many in the unincorporated county, but the county supports that, they believe many of those projects should be in one of the two cities. The one that is being, is under construction right now is right across the street with the Lincoln Way Senior Housing Project, and that was done through the Washoe County Home Consortium project. In for review through the home consortium currently is a project in Sparks. I don't know how it will be voted on. I'm one of the members of the TRC on the home consortium, but it's for a request for money over on Audi Boulevard. So, we'll see where that goes. Commissioner Bowles has been involved in some of the home TRC, or the home consortium project, and been on some of the ribbon cuttings for some of them. Moving forward through the report, in the public services and facilities component, the City of Sparks and the planning commission made a recommendation of approval to the city council to annex two parcels last year. That totaled five acres into the City of Sparks, and both of those ultimately were annexed into the city. The city planning commission also did two master plan amendments last year, and one of those was to go to TOD, and the other one was to go to, I should've said, both of them were to go to TOD. One of them was from medium-density residential and to TOD, and as you might remember, the master plan designation is still TOD, but the zoning designation is mixed-use district.
Right.
The City of Sparks is also updating its master plan. The planning commission's becoming very familiar with that process as well. We identified that to regional planning because the City of Sparks, along with all the other jurisdictions, has a list of scheduled additions that we are required to make to be in compliance with the 2012 regional plan. The City of Sparks has identified those in the new comprehensive plan, and will also try to make it conform, will be making it conform to the 2017 regional plan after that's adopted. In the 2012 regional plan, staff identified in your report some items to regional planning that staff believes should be considered in the 2017 update to the regional plan. Those in. Those included densities, TOD corridors, floor area ratios for commercial. And, and these may not just apply to the City of Sparks, but they can apply to Reno as well. We think that we should discuss appropriate TOD corridors in Reno because their corridors are so large. The regional planning commissioners are probably more familiar with that. A glimpse at the year to come, the City of Sparks will be in its first year of utilizing the new zoning code standards, whereas it's in its sixth year of utilizing the TOD standards. While the TOD standards were amended in the new zoning code, for the most part, they were, many of the concepts and standards were brought forward because of the big process we did of creating those TOD standards, and they were relatively still new. So we will go into our sixth year of utilizing those standards, and coincidentally, last year, the planning commission and staff reviewed numerous projects in the TOD corridor, including the 900 or so units on Marina Gateway, the 200-plus units in Victorian Square, and then the handbook amendment for the, where the parking garage is. Those are all within the TOD corridor. And that concludes my presentation to the Sparks Planning Commission. There is no motion because the requirement is that we provide an annual report to regional planning, but we always bring it to the Sparks Planning Commission so that you get to review it again at Regional Planning Commission.
We can still thank you for your good work.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question for Jim. On updating the comprehensive plan which includes the new street classifications, what is that?
Updating, which part are you looking at?
On page six, number two, says the comprehensive plan will include a new simplified land use plan as well as new street classification, complete streets and trail maps. I was wondering what street classification was.
Well, it could be that to identify which streets we want to see complete streets up on, so classify, say Sparks Boulevard to have bike lanes, sidewalks, and four lanes.
Okay, so there's.
An identification of where you would like to see certain type of streets be, maybe you'd like to see that street be more for moving cars, and you'd like to see another street more geared toward moving pedestrians, and another street more towards moving bicyclists, or a street toward moving people, and what that, what your definition of moving people would be. But I believe the street classification could go along with that concept.
Thanks, Jim.
And I have, you know, the staff, all of the staff at the city helps to create this report. I don't write the whole thing, I, to an extent, compile it from Armando, and Karen, and Brian Kason, in the engineering, in the Public Works Division, so that's kind of how that works.
Thank you, Jim. We will open this up for public comment, item 13?
No public.
I think it's general business.
General business. It's under general.
So you can just move to the next item if there's no more discussion.
Any comments from the commissioners?
The Northern Nevada Community Housing Resource Board looks forward to working with you on that project on Audi Boulevard.
Thank you.
I will not be at the 17th meeting of March.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Next item on the agenda is a.
Don't we have public comment?
Well, I asked for that under, after Mr. Rundell gave his presentation.
Oh, okay.
And the comment was, there was no public comment.
Got it.
But just in case we need to, are there any public comments?
You heard him. You got him. Just want to make sure.
No public comment. Can I do?
Close it.
Close it.